Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the Lepore County Council's regular meeting of June 24th to order. If everybody would please stand for the pledge. Mr. Santana?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Auditor.
Mr. Garner, Mr. Mullenauer.
Present.
Mr. Novak.
Present.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Present.
Mr. Santana.
Present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Do we have a approval of the June 24th agenda, Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, I'd like to approve the agenda minus Under New Visas Number Three.
Is there any objections?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any objections, any questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Approval of the May 28, 2019 minutes.
So...
You have both motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is now open. Public comment is now open.
Public comment?
Public comment is now open and it's now closed. All right. Next item on the agenda is department head reports. Waste no time getting up here.
I'm running this by the...
He wants to go home, too.
Good evening, Bob Young, Lepore County Highway.
Good evening.
Just want to update you, I talked to Mr. Yagowski a little bit on the phone this morning, this afternoon. Reece Riley, where the issues we had with Reece Riley and then we had secondary issues with him that we got him back to work on Joliet Road, Community Crossing Project. And we spec'd out on those projects a Class C mixed design, N dot mixed design, a little tougher mix. They used the wrong oil and it was a Class B oil. So we got it straightened out and they corrected their oil and they moved on. So there was four and a half mile, lane miles that was affected. So they made a price adjustment. It was like $20 a ton for the liquid asphalt. Comes at about $6,000. So they're going to make a refund to us on that. And there's probably going to be an under run. They bid out 120 square yard, 120,000 square yards and they laid more like 116,000. So there should be a slight adjustment there as well, a refund. To kind of compensate, under the direction of the commissioners and Shaw Friedman, I negotiated with them pretty much all day, Wednesday or Thursday last week, I don't recall. So at the end of that negotiation, what the offers we got on the table from them was to the shoulder stone on the Joliet Road project, which was going to be our responsibility to put down. They're going to do that at no cost to us if we allow them to use the grinding, some millings off of Severs Road, which is the next community crossing project, which I don't have a problem with. Commissioners accepted it. That's what we use for shoulder all the time, is millings, hacks better, just better. They also had a large pile of limestone stockpiled out of Bird Iron's Body Shop on Joliet Road for some of the shoulder work. They're going to give that to us. It's just short of 1,000 ton. I think there was 1,000 ton there originally, they used about 200 ton. So at least approximately 800 ton in that pile. They're going to give that to the highway. We have to remove it from that site and put it on our stockpiles. Last but not least, they're going to pave the midway area at the fairgrounds. That's a public donation.
Wow.
But don't be confused now, the midway is not the Sessions Boulevard where you walk into Front Gate. That's not the midway. Midway is a section over, big square area with the loop around that they set all the rides and the vendors games and stuff. So that's...
How many square feet is...
I don't know, they gave it to me. I'd say it's close to $100,000.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Put two inches of surface on that if I can get it ready for them. It's a lot of dirt and stone and stuff laying there. I've got to get a sweat. Weather has not been very permitting to do that. So it's raining out there right now. And also I want to just mention, so you have a little bit of time to think about it. You're considering me replacing a hire tonight. Well, last week, we had Kai just up and quit. He's been taking classes. We didn't know he'd been attending classes and different things to, had an opportunity to get into 150 Operators Union. So I mean, I'm not going to stand in the way for something like that for a guy to better himself, you know, but we've got to replace him. And he's out of Lepore. And I'm not done yet. This morning, one of our bridge tenders quit.
Really?
He get two weeks notice. Yeah, the one they call Brownie.
Really?
Yeah.
Your day shift guy?
Day shift guy, yes. So he gave me two weeks. I doubt very much we gave him a hire in two weeks, but I do have a few people trained to...
How long does a training take for that?
I mean, you can do a good job in a day, you know, half a day, all depends on the person. So the training's the smallest part about it, is getting somebody that wants to take the job. So I think that's all I got.
Sure.
For now.
So are you, are you asking...
Well, I don't know if you could consider these other two, or at least give us a...
Just working to get the ball rolling.
Or however you guys want to handle it.
That would come from you, President, right? Just like this other one because...
Yeah. So if you just want to lump it all in, I don't know if you can do that.
So that's, it would be replacement...
Be replacement for a equipment operator.
One equipment operator.
In Hannah.
Okay.
And one of the same in Lepore. And then the bridge tender.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those three.
Also in the motion, I would like to pass word to HR that I believe, because this is a part-time, full-time job, so it's that one job that we have, it's a unique situation. It's not one of those that people bid on because they have full-time jobs. They would get the same benefits, of course, to do that. So I'd like to pass the word on to HR that we really need to fill that and expedite that bridge tender because you don't have anybody to help run those, that department. They're pretty lean in that department.
So we have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Santana. Is there any questions?
I have just one question. Because it's only advertised for the one, is that an issue, Madam Auditor?
It's internal. That's our rule.
I just want to make sure.
It's a replacement.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure of that either.
Right. Spending money we have to advertise.
Oh, I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. You were right.
I ran out of room.
Bull's wagon, D.C. grant. I informed you all a little bit about that. I went ahead and applied for it because the deadline was approaching. And it was shot big, I mean, it went for 20 trucks. I know that's not feasible, but shot high and just going to wait and see what they approve, you know, if we get accepted and how much they accept. And then I'll have a dollar figure and come back to you all and see what, do you want to go for all of it, part of it, none of it? I just didn't want to see this thing come and go without taking a swing at it.
When will you be notified?
I think next month sometime, maybe.
We'll make sure you're on the agenda for next month.
Okay, all right. I really am done now.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Next question. Question? Just pertaining to that, going back to the Joliet Road.
Yes.
You said Class B oil.
Well, we spec'd out Class C and they used Class B in just, in four and a half miles of it, four and a half lane miles. So just a couple miles total.
Is that going to affect the...
No, actually, I tell you what, it really looked good. And I can, man, this is the best looking mix I've ever seen you guys lay. And even the paving form, I think, yeah, this is some really good looking stuff. It's coming out of Alpo Plant because they lost their certification here in Lepore. And I don't know, I've talked to a few people, I've talked to some experts in the field and they said that that's actually a good mixed design. The ingredients are Class C, so it means you can use less binder replacements, which is ground up asphalt and ground up shingles. So the Class C allows a lesser percentage of that, making it a little cleaner mix. And then with the Class B oil, which is more flexible for county roads, I'm going to do some more looking into it. I think we might have stumbled onto something here. We call it the Bob Young Mix Design.
See how she holds up. You could retire for sure, right?
Yeah.
I explained backwards, Bob.
Yeah. Good night.
Thanks. Any other department heads?
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't?
Excuse me, I think there was a pending motion.
Yeah, it was a pending motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. I didn't think we did, but I...
Right.
Like we're having a conversation, I'm sure we did. Hi, Lois.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lois Sosinski, Lepore County Recorder. So I'm here this evening for two things. One will be brief, and I guess are both semi-brief. One of them is, and I'll be getting the press release out for the newspaper, notify everybody of all the ins and outs, but we, the Recorder's Office now accepts plastic. I know it's been coming supposedly prior to my tenure there. I've done research by checking with other Northern Indiana recorders, checked with a few departments here. One of our departments does use PayGov. That's who I decided to go with mainly because, well, one item, they are in Indiana, they're based in Indianapolis, that's their home base, and the simplicity of the whole operation. This is just a convenience. We still encourage cash or check. The fees are not really outrageous, however, on occasion, people are found there without having a couple dollars in their pocket and they want to get a copy of their deed, mortgage or whatever the case may be. We've had title insurance companies or attorney firms that haven't made their monthly subscription service. And if it's not made by the first of the next month, it's turned off. So with at least a card over the phone on their discretion, they can go ahead and put it on their card and they experience no interruption of service. An interruption of service, of course, is interrupting their business for the day. So the basic is there's a minimum convenience fee of a dollar for anything under $33. So if you charge five bucks, it costs you six. County's not out any money. We get no money of that fee. That's a convenience charge. Anything that's $33 or more, there's a 3% convenience fee. And I like the way we get our notifications and monies basically the very next day. So that's what I've decided to go with. Porter County Recorder also has had this for five years and we also share the same type of software program. So I knew it was going to be a really good fix or fit. And then the next thing, and I'll have more details and I'll be talking to my liaison about, it's probably time for us to replace our hard drives, our computers. They are 2013 and older and we are experiencing major problems with those with speed of accessing the new software. It will not cost general funder, you guys, a dime. I'll be able to carry that in through equipment, through some enhancement monies from my tapestry credits that have been accumulating up. And I'll bring that whole plan to you. But the computers, I've already had Darlene in and they are from 2013 and older. And they just spin and spin and we've had her in there accessing them. And when we get on the phone, if we have computer problems with the software, the vendor will have him call. And they're waiting and waiting and waiting and that's what they have said to us. The data we've got in that software program, there's just so much because we have docs and that in there back from the 1800s that are already scanned and indexed in. So it's just the next step in modernizing the office and trying to keep up before we have a catastrophe. And I'll bring all that to you later. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Thanks.
Any other department heads? Any other department? Hearing none, liaison reports. Mr. Mullenauer.
On May 29th, I attended the Lepore County Redevelopment Commission meeting. And on June 12th, I attended the Lepore County Sheriff's Merit Board meeting. And a portion of that meeting consisted of the introduction of this year's six Neil Thompson Scholarship recipients. And just want to congratulate those six young people. On June 12th, I attended the Council Finance Committee meeting with the two others, the two of you regarding discussion and costs associated with our Court's Criminal Law 26, or Criminal Rule 26 taking effect January 1st, 2020. And on June 14th, participated in the county's fallen blood drive. I've got the bruising to prove it. And June 17th, I attended a special meeting and, well, we all did with the Commissioners' meeting with the Triangle Transit Project, the Bus Triangle, proposed new county website, Criminal Law Rule 26, and a special council meeting on county viability fund request. So that's, oh, this Friday and Saturday, I know Councilman Rosenbaum and I will be attending Indiana County Council's Association Conference at Shelbyville. And on Friday, I think it's going to be pretty, hope to be pretty informative, that's what's going to be the entire discussion, is Criminal Rule 26 on Friday afternoon for about four hours. I think they got it scheduled 1 to 4. So should be able to get some further information on that. And that's all I've got.
Great. Mr. Yagowski?
Not at this time, sir.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Sorry, I have two pages. I won't repeat everything he said, I'll just go, yes, redevelopment, the workshops, et cetera. NERC, last week, I attended a meeting earlier in the month, but they also did a press release to a public comment on Engage Northwest Indiana. It's to draft a public participation plan. Moving on, I was not able to make the meeting for Parks and Rec on the 5th, but they did have a great announcement. We're going to hear more about it in a little bit. They obtained another healthcare foundation grant of $77,000 to install four multi-gym facilities at one in each of the parks, three bike stations with water bottle refill stations. I also had the opportunity last Friday to tour all four county parks and I will tell you, I was, I didn't even know Bloom existed. And so it was really nice to go and see things that were, that are pretty amazing that we have as assets that just make the county even more beautiful. The State Board of Accounts, you've just heard. I attended the County Commissioners' meeting on Wednesday, the 19th. There are quite a few things that came out of it. We've seen some of it here. Workshops. And I visited with the County Treasurer's Office to learn what they do in a little bit more detail. I also visited with the Recorder's Office to learn what their operations are like. And I'm continuing my tour of as many departments as I can before and even after, but before our budget hearings in July. A couple of the things I spotted when driving over the half of the Route 35 Bridge, that when they were laying the concrete, I couldn't see something, I couldn't see any drainage. And so I did ask Mitch Bishop to check into it because there's nothing like having solid concrete with solid ice on top of it on an overpass. So yes, there is drainage, it's just hard to see now as they're laying the concrete and it's a different system than what they had before. Before it was only on one side, right underneath light poles. And I'm not exactly sure how it dripped down, don't care, as long as there is something for our safety. There's more, but I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just a special meeting, Randy, on the 17th and everything else is pretty quiet.
I have EMA on the agenda and so I hope for your support on that. And again, he's not my liaison, but over the years, I've worked with Bob Young. And I'll tell you what, you guys, you get a phone call on something going on in somebody's neighborhood, dealing with roads, dealing with drainage, call Bob Young. I'm going to tell you what, he's been great and he gets either himself or his people out there in a short time. And it helps and that's what we're supposed to do. We have to be that person in between, even if he's not your liaison. Other than that, Chief, I was going to call you. I don't have anything else.
I'll echo what he said about Bob. It's great when you have a constituent call you and say, hey, there's a giant pothole or something. You shoot Bob a text and you get something back, says they're on it today or tomorrow and you go by there and it's taken care of. So there's nothing worse than, you know, things don't get taken care of, then they're following, calling again and this and that. But Bob does a great job.
Done a good job for many years, Bob.
Very good. Attended, I'm not sure if I mentioned this last month, but the EMS awards were last month to the beginning of this month. I lost track of when it was, I apologize. But they got men and women over there doing a fantastic job and I just want to commend them. The Redevelopment Commission is, we had the last one, we got another one this Wednesday. And I had the absolute pleasure of judging the Paladin Talent Contest. So they had 30 very talented young ladies and men doing skits from all kinds of different things. And I'm going to tell you what, every one of them thought they were a rock star and every one of them, the support of all the other clients and members for everyone. There was no, I want to win, you're not going to win. I mean, everybody supported everybody. It was absolutely incredible. It was one of the hardest judging things I've ever done in my life because everyone should have won. Mr. Yagowski? Yeah, and actually I was there with another Yagowski. Chris Yagowski does a great job over there, so. With that, move on to new business. Consider approval to appoint Stephanie Fenters...
Fenters?
Fenters. ...to the Westville New Durham Township Public Library Board to replace Laura Mallett.
Someone?
They have a motion?
Second.
They have a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, replacement of a field officer. This is, I had given permission for this one because I had spoke to the director over at the Health Department. Replace a field officer... No, wait, 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 wait.
Isn't this encompassed?
These are two different things. One is a field officer for community corrections. And I did speak with the director over there that it's an absolute necessity, gave them permission to start, so this is just to reaffirm. And then replacing a nurse at the, I talked to Tony over at the Health Department. So they're very shorthanded right now, so they need to get those things going, so.
You want to do them together, Randy?
Yeah, we can do them both.
Make the motion for the field replacement officer for community corrections and the replacement RN at the Health Department.
I'll second.
They have a motion by Sullivan, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Item three was removed. Item four, consider request to establish a professional services account within the probation user, which fingered out, I'm not reading that.
Wait till the end of the story comes. It gets more interesting.
Fund 201 with permission to transfer $8,000 into said account from the motor vehicle fund from Mr. Steve Ira. Mr. Yagowski?
I'd like to make the motion, but I talked with Mrs. Swinski. We were trying to get rid of all of the accounts that were out there. This is not really, this is just the way it's written. This is a line item for his bill. It's not an account. I just make the point of note, that's all.
Right. I believe he needs this to be able to hire an outside person to do that, but it's not. So is there any other questions?
No.
They have a motion? Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, requesting permission to spend to purchase one desktop computer in the amount of $1,027.45. This comes from Mr. Ira also and it's coming out of his fund, correct, Ms. Swinski?
Yes. Correct.
And he had the approval of Darlene, so I'll make that motion to approve that, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Old business. Is there any old business?
None.
Any correspondence?
None.
Ordinances?
None.
We'll go into appropriations, transfers and requests. First item is Lepore County Plan Commission, request additional appropriation for expenses and permitting training in the amount of $44,000.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The report that I emailed you earlier in the week, the concept was right for the first five months, but at the bottom where it had demos, that shouldn't have been on there, that should have been salaries and mileage.
Okay.
So we've got a copy of the permit.
That goes with it.
Please, just to give you an idea of the types of permits that we do. And it says on here for expenses and permit training. We don't need training, we know how to do permits. It's, the problem is the software, it's the website, it needs further development. We can't help it. We have to show them what it is that we need in order to get these permits done.
Mr. Yagowski?
Another, I talked with Mike from Real Estate and also our GIS Director. And they were working with you guys on this thing. I'd like to see if we could do this in-house. This should have been done two years ago, but it didn't. And we delayed it for a year and then we had the training done by you. You're right, you guys went to your training, but I think this is easy enough to be done that I think we can do this in-house. Well, that's my opinion. So I would like to make motion to tableists.
I'd like to make a motion to tableists.
Wow.
I'll second that motion pending more information as Mr. Yagowski, I believe, is requesting.
We have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Are we allowed to say anything?
There's no question on the table.
No.
No further discussion.
Unbelievable.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, we do.
Motion's stable. Next item on the agenda is the Lepore County EMA requesting additional appropriation not to exceed $27,644 for replacement of a vehicle. Evening, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I've had...
A few weeks ago, did three different bids, presented them to my liaison and Council President as well, just seeking support. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Shuffling papers.
Let me, can I chime in at this point? EMA Director Butcher did bring three bids to us, one, two, three, as far as monies go. His recommendation after looking at the vehicle was the middle of the road, if you will, and that would have been the, what you call it, the Chevy...
Silverado.
The Chevy Silverado. And I did have a conversation with Councilman Yagowski and I'll let him weigh in on this because with the money that he was asking for any and all of these three, it came with approximately a $4,700 trade-in. But as I had conversation with Mr. Yagowski, he said, you know, maybe we should keep that, go ahead and pay that extra and keep that vehicle, A, right now in our fleet, and B, it might give an opportunity for the sheriff to weigh out what he might trade next time. And if that goes into that pool, that would be fine. So I say all that to get to this. I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a recommendation to go ahead and fund the 2019 Chevy Silverado, but that does reflect the $4,700 coming off of it. So again, I guess we have to look over to the auditor as far as how this has been advertised. it and then you would have to come back to us in four weeks, which is our July 22nd meeting for the actual vote. Joey, what do you think because?
We advertised the highest amount, which was $27,644, so.
That was.
It's $29,000, did you say?
It's going to go to that because we're not going to trade in the vehicle.
Right. So we'll do a motion of support tonight.
Motion to support, but you'll have to wait till the July 24th, July meeting to.
Yeah.
Because I don't want us to forget the $1,500 of lights unless you're going to try and sell the lights.
And speaking with my liaison, he asked me to take that out of my everyday operating budget instead of asking the council for this amount of product.
Okay.
That was a $1,500?
Approximately.
No. Or.
We also wanted you to go talk to Bob Young and see out at the Highway Department, they had some stuff left over from the sheriff cars or something. See if they have some equipment, used equipment out there to put on it.
Well, the plan was to, was to take the lights and stuff off of.
There you go.
The current vehicle that I had for the most of it, but if I'm going to put any equipment in the back is what I need, then I would have to have a cap to cover on the back.
Check with any leftover sheriff's department stuff before, you know, like, just like in Michigan City, they got a lot of stuff from older stuff out there that maybe you can, you know, use a lot of that stuff first.
Okay. Try to save us what you can.
The only concern is if you pull something off, you leave holes. So if we're not getting rid of it, then we're going to have holes in the vehicle at the top where the lights are, where the lights are held on.
We'll get something that doesn't put holes in it.
No, well, he's saying if you take the light bar off on the top, then you're going to have holes. I don't, I don't know what the protocol or however that, they probably get patched, they probably get plugged or some, I don't know, but you see his concern.
Right.
I understand.
It's minor.
Right. Sure, we can get back in a second.
So we can do a motion of support, Mr. President?
Yes. Need a motion of support, would you?
To make a motion of support for the 2019 Chevy Silverado for $25,253. I'll second that.
So we have a motion of support and Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Moldauer.
No, 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 no. Guy, can you chime in on this one please?
Sure. I think the motion of support needs to be just for the 2019 Chevy Silverado that's just under $30,000. It's going to be, it's $29,000 and change.
Okay.
It's $25,253 plus $4,700.
Yeah, we're not trading.
With that amendment.
Good call.
Correct.
Now somebody's second.
So you willing to modify your?
Yes.
Motion, you're willing to modify your second? Is there any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So with the motion of support versus you guys voting yes, is there anything that I tell the dealer at this point? Do I, am I able to place the order?
Yeah.
With the motion of support?
Yeah. We just have to formally, if I can speak. Yeah, 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 you've got the right now to go, just like we have new hirings and this and that, when they go to search for somebody because we know we're going to have that coming and you've got the support that says we're going to pay that bill. But again, because of.
You have to advertise.
We have to advertise, yeah.
And not to exceed now is what?
Would you say 30?
$29,953.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
And would you like to take that out of Riverboat?
We have, we'll do that when we do the appropriation. How's that?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Uh huh.
Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Commissioners requesting additional appropriation for legal fees and professional services in the amount of $255,000. Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening. Doc President, members of the council, I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. President. Mr. Yagowski.
We made a cut from, I believe it was $500,255 here in the budget process. I know we've gone from, a couple of years ago, this is why, this is why it came up, $30,000 to $35,000 we were paying the attorney fees, we're down to $18,000 to $23,000 a month, so we've dressed almost to half of what we did, so that half is reflective of the amount requested. I appreciate them trying to do diligence and doing what the council asked them to do, so I can make a motion this time for the full amount of $255,000.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Santana.
I'm sorry, out of, I'm sorry, out of Riverboat.
Out of Riverboat?
Okay.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is requesting additional appropriation from the general fund, franchise fee, $1,000 for the update of the county website, not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is requesting additional appropriation from the general fund, franchise fee, $1,000 for the update of the county website, not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I would like to make one statement is that even though it's a general fund, it was money just reimbursed from our, from our franchise fee for the gray.
Yeah. Might I make another comment to this and this is just kind of point of conversation and again, folks, if you didn't watch last Monday, we had a workshop on this and Councilman Yagowski did allude to the fact that back in, what was it, 2003?
16 years ago.
Yeah, 2003, 16 years ago, we started with a website or updated, what have you, but like he said, the newness kind of wore off and we weren't getting the, the activity that we were looking for from the different departments. So I just want to say to, and I think he's gone, but anyway, to the commissioners, this is on the record, to the commissioners and the council, you know, we still do not have, and this is what Yagowski referred to, we still don't have that much to, to make elected officials do things that we want them to do, but as commissioners and council, and our council, that appoints these people to departments, we need to be kept apprised of their contribution or lack thereof so that we can, you know, lay a little heavy hand on that to say, look, the website is saying you haven't given minutes, you haven't given your next meeting, just different things like that. So all I'm saying is, is please, let's all be cognizant, I guess, of providing information in a timely fashion. It's for the good of the public and that's, and that's what is going to make this system work, otherwise it's going to fail. I can't say fail, but it's just going to go down from, just like the one in 2003 did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Lepore County Engineer requesting additional appropriations from the Cume Bridge for repair of bridge number 34 for the amount of $568,991. Good evening, Jay. Good evening.
There you go.
We have a motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Santana. Is there any question?
I do have a question. As I was looking at the minutes from, where are we at now? I guess it would have been May, we're in June now. This was first advertised and it was pulled off the, off of our agenda at $636,480. Today I see it on our agenda, which is a good thing, it's $568,991. Might I ask you, I guess, what the difference and why it actually went down?
I guess the only explanation I would have is that the engineer's estimate, I would put, put an estimate together for FEMA and that was the 600 some thousand, the bids came in under that.
Sweet.
So the amount that was, the low bid was the $568,921, I think, or something.
$991, sure. That's fine. Okay, that's cool. I just, I noticed that, so.
It is, there will be, it's a 7525, I wouldn't say it's a grant, but it's a FEMA disaster aid package, so 75% of that we should get reimbursed by FEMA. And just for the public notice, this is a bridge that had a washout problem last year with the flooding and stuff. Yes. 800, 800 south of County Line, St. Joe County Line. So everybody knows. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Any questions? On anything?
No.
Okay.
You've been good. Thank you.
I do have one. What's the timetable for full repair?
Reeve Riley got the bid, they were low bid. I will give them the notice to proceed and originally when I had a conversation with them, they're going to try to start in July with the wet weather and being, you know, slowed down a little, I don't know. I'm still hoping to have it done by this fall.
Who was the next lowest bid?
Um, Lepore County, Lepore Construction.
Okay.
Yeah. And they were the, they were less than the 5, 6, 8, but they were considerably higher, about $75,000 higher than Reeve Riley was. All right, okay. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is request permission to spend for firearm fund for pistols in the amount not to exceed $600.
So moved.
Second.
Motion. By Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Yagowski. Is there any questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Park Department requesting permission to spend from Park Non-Reverting Capital Fund for grant match for Lure Park in the amount of
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Sullivan. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. How are the parks holding up? We weren't going to let you off.
Rain, rain, rain.
We're still getting rain, we still got some standing water. Yeah, we have been mowing them once, yeah, but we did get them mowed before all the bottom grass turned brown, so everything is green, but we still have water and mud in some places, which.
Hopefully there's some sunshine in the forecast.
Let's hope.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County Auditor requesting permission to spend for dual homestead fund for the purchase of two scanners and programming not to exceed $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Santana, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. Is there any council comments? Any attorney comments? We'll go.
I do have a comment. In a quick look up, the reason why I wasn't sure whether or not, why I voted no on the